Thank you for being here tonight. We will begin our Board of Commissioner regular meeting, February 6, 2025, at 7:05 PM. Ms. Jones, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Present.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Present.
Mayor Anderson.
Present.
I'm number three, is prayer and pledge. Dear Lord, we just want to thank you for all of our many citizens in the city of Fairview, and we take very seriously what we do and accomplish up here, and try to do the best for our community. We pray that you just put on our hearts and our minds what we should do and how we should just read each one of these items and just really seek you and seek what's best for our community. We pray for the ones who are sick, and just, you know, just be there with each one of our community members, and we ask all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm number four, is mayor's comments. I just want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and everyone watching at home. We appreciate our law enforcement who are here to keep us safe, and we just ask that everyone be courteous and respectful when they speak, and if everyone would just make sure that they speak into the mics so that everyone at home can hear. Thank you. I'm number five, is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Mayor, may I? I'd like to make an amendment, please. I'd like to add a discussion about the location of the police training facility to the agenda for tonight, please.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Vice Mayor McDonald. Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye. That will be item 11C, under new business. Discussion of location of training facility. I'm number six, citizens' comments.
Mayor, we need to still approve the agenda.
Okay, sorry. I was, that's why I was hesitating.
We need to approve the agenda as amended.
I was thinking about that. Okay, so approval, we need to approve the agenda as well.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Ms. Jones.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
I'm number six, is citizens' comments.
There's one tonight, Mayor, Jason Holloman.
Thank you, members of the commission. My name is Jason Holloman. I'm an attorney in Nashville, Tennessee, 4210 Park Avenue. I'm here tonight on behalf of several homeowners in the area that is immediately adjacent to the 7740 Cumberland Drive property that is on your agenda as 11A, an approximately 351-acre proposed annexation. My clients, as this body may be aware, have been tracking the development of this property with its current ownership in Williamson County for several months, and now the applicant has sought to annex into the city of Fairview. One of our primary concerns is that in Williamson County, this was zoned for large estate lots, and while I understand that the default here in the city of Fairview is to come in as RS40 because that is your largest tract residential development, that is still a pretty significant upzoning of this property by default when it comes into this city, and my clients are greatly concerned. This is a rural area, a very limited road structure, as to how that will be impactful to them as this property develops. I understand that there will be additional times and approvals for that type of thing to happen. We would love to hear from the applicant as to some greater specificity as what is planned. We've heard commercial enterprise, we've heard fairly small-scale suburban development, or, you know, small-lot suburban development, of which an acre for these tracts of land would be fairly dense compared to what's around. So, for that reason, until we have more information, I'm here on behalf of numerous property owners adjacent to this that oppose the annexation because of the impact it will have on them as it comes into this jurisdiction. Thank you.
I'm number seven, public announcements, award and recognition, A, city events. Mr. Ross.
Good evening, Mayor and board. Just want to remind everyone that tomorrow, we're going to be having a blood drive here at City Hall from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM. Blood Assurance will be hosting that blood drive. You can either sign up with the link that's posted on our website and social media, or you can just simply come by and donate blood. We're still accepting sponsors for the July 3rd celebration. We keep on having sponsors roll in, at least one a week for that event. Everything is looking good for the event as well, and just want to give everyone an update that the Buery Nature Park website has a new look, so I encourage everyone to just go to the website and see all the new information that is on the website as well, and all the new updates. And that is all I have tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Mayor?
Yes.
For the July 3rd event, for the entertainment, is this also, is this also open to local artists?
So, it is open to local artists, but our artists are already booked for the event. I typically try to book those artists by October of every year, just because larger musicians, they typically start booking their calendar out right around October, November, and so this year, our main artist, our total act for our artists is Brian Ree, so he's a local artist here in Fairview, then Colby Oakley, which he lives here in Fairview as well, and Rubik's Groove. So, Rubik's Groove has been our headliner for July 3rd event for the last four years, and they love coming out here. They're a part of the community. One member lives out here, the rest live in Franklin.
Thank you. Mayor, one more item.
Yes.
Our next meeting on the 20th, I believe it is, we're going to be recognizing, the state is going to be recognizing the wrestling team from the middle school here at City Hall at our next meeting, and that's for our state recognition, even though we already recognize them, that they're going to be Senator Jack Johnson and Representative Lee Reeves will be here as well, and that's been confirmed.
Anything else? I'm number eight, staff comments and monthly reports. Item 8A, city manager comments. Mr. Darty.
Thank you, Mayor, board. We'll have a planning commission meeting next Tuesday, February 11th, at 7:00 PM here at City Hall. Also want to remind everyone about around-town coffee business networking next Wednesday, February 12th, at 8:30 AM at Going Postal. I want to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed on Monday, February 17th, in observance of President's Day. The city is currently accepting applications for two firefighter positions and one receptionist naturalist position in the park. The fiscal year 2024 audit is complete and has been posted to the Comptroller's website. Blanketship, our auditors, will be, will make an audit presentation at an upcoming meeting, hopefully within one of the next three. They will also provide hard copies of the audit to all BOC members. I will get you out of electronic copy shortly. And then I also wanted to share that the parks have been working on a new project, that it's going to be called a storybook trail, and there will be more information coming. I'm going to email you some information I have received from Bree, and then also, that'll be coming up on a future agenda for your approval. One thing is, I believe it's all going to be funded by either sponsorship or donations or grants, so I believe it's, they've got most of that stuff lined up, but just wanted y'all to know that that'll be coming before you at a future meeting in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Item number nine, consent agenda. 9A, minutes from January 16th, 2025, Board of Commissioner regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Ms. Jones.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
I'm 9A, passes 5-0. Item 10, old business, A, second and final reading, ordinance 2025-02, and ordinance to amend Title 12 of the City of Fairview Municipal Code, specifically sections related to the city's fee structure for permits and fees related to construction, remodeling, building permits, and industrial, commercial, and residential development. City Planner, Mr. Greer.
First, my apologies for missing the last meeting. I was out with the flu. I have provided to each of you prior to that meeting the exhibits that are attached with the ordinance along with a fee schedule exhibit that was asked for by Commissioner Roberts detailing out our current fee schedule and proposed fee schedule for some of our most common development projects and most common building permits. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from the board? Ms. Jones. I'm sorry. I guess we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
I can't.
Ms. Jones.
Vice Mayor McDonald.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall.
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Item 10A, passes 5-0. Item 11, new business. 11A, Resolution 02-25, a resolution calling for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of territory into the city of Fairview by owner consent with RS40 single-family residential zoning and approving a plan of services. 7740 Cumberland Drive, 351.27 plus or minus acres, map 047, parcel 094.00. Mr. Greer?
The parcel that is shown on the screen is 351.27 acres. It is 7740 Cumberland Drive. This parcel is within our urban growth boundary, and it is also contiguous with the city. The blue area that is shown on the screen is our, everything that's within the city of Fairview municipality, and so it is contiguous with the city, and it is within our urban growth boundary. The representatives are here tonight to discuss any questions that you may have about their annexation.
Thank you.
One other thing, it did receive a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission to the Board of Commissioners for annexation.
Yes, you can come forward. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joe Watson, attorney, on behalf of the applicants. I mean, if the board has any questions, we're happy to answer them. I would just echo what Mr. Greer said, is it's within the urban growth boundary. The urban growth boundary contemplates that areas that are within the urban growth boundary are subject, and kind of contemplates them being annexed. Here, the applicant obviously has requested that. The applicable statute allows the applicant to request annexation. The current use of the lot, of the parcel that is requesting to be annexed as a single-family home, I know the comments from Mr. Holloman had concerns about, well, it's going to come in zoned RS40, but that zoning is a single-family home, and that's what it's going to be used for, and going forward, we, our client and the applicant will comply with all the zoning, and, you know, this concern about what might happen in the future, we would say is unfounded, and so we would just say that the annexation is appropriate. It's contemplated above the urban growth boundary, and we'll answer any questions you all have.
Thank you. Yes.
My biggest question is, why? Why does your client want to annex into the city of Fairview?
Well, a few main reasons. You know, the plan of services, there's not a ton, like water is currently not serviced in that area, but, you know, there is something to be said about police and fire service, so that is something that is important to them. Just sort of from a maybe altruistic or a higher-level sort of reason, since they've been out here at this parcel, they've considered themselves and viewed themselves as residents of Fairview. That's where they spend their time, that's where they eat, that's where they live their lives, and so, you know, I guess this sort of just formalizes that. And then, you know, the certainty with the zoning. You know, being in Fairview, they are going to be zoned RS40. That ordinance is very specific and clear about what that allows you to do and what you can't do, so, you know, I guess I would say, I don't want to say why not, but it's not like they're getting a ton from the city of Fairview, other than they do consider themselves citizens of Fairview. I don't think it's, they're going to be utilizing a lot of resources or using up a lot of, you know, of Fairview's resources by being annexed.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is, currently, if they have an emergency with, that requires fire or police, who responds?
I don't know that anybody would technically be required to respond.
Would our fire chief, would you be able to help us understand the answer to that, please?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, being zoned in the county, that's responded to by the Williamson County Rescue Squad. The Williamson County medic service would, from our station, would respond on a medical call for that. If it's annexed into the city, they'll have fire service from us, and still the same medical service, but it's covered by volunteers right now, which they would get the call in that area if there was a fire. We would automatically mutual aid, but only with two firefighters and a tanker.
So, if I can, if I can kind of restate that, just to make sure I understand, if there's a medical call, then there is a county, I guess, a county ambulance that would come out from Fairview? Is that right? Is that what you said?
If it was in quarters. If it's in Nashville on a transfer, it could come from Franklin, it could come from Leapers Fork. There, I mean, that'd be a considerable response time if it wasn't in quarters here.
And if that were the case, would any Fairview first responders go instead, knowing that the county was unavailable?
If we were requested. The county would have to request us. It wouldn't be an automatic response for us.
Thank you.
That same thing apply to the police department?
It would. Okay, she's shaking her head back there. Thank you.
I have a question. What is the ultimate goal with that property? I understand it's going to be that, but, I mean, I've heard so many different rumors, is what I'm going to call it, of what your client wants to build there or turn it into. Can you elaborate on exactly what we're planning on doing with that parcel?
This parcel, a single-family home.
Okay, how many dwellings are on there right now?
Three.
Three, okay. So, one's a house and a barn, I'm assuming?
I think that's right.
Okay. And do we plan on building more?
Not that I'm aware of.
An event center or anything like that?
Not on this parcel.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
When you say not on this parcel, are you indicating that there's another parcel?
Our clients do own adjoining, or a nearby parcel at 7324 Cane Fork Road that is not subject of the annexation.
Thank you.
I will also note that the adjacent parcel that was just mentioned off of Cane Fork is currently outside of the urban growth boundary of the city of Fairview.
Mayor?
Yes.
May? Being an annexation, looking at it for what it is, I understand that there's concerns with citizens that, or of individuals that live near that property. However, from the city's perspective, it being in the urban growth boundary, it being contiguous to the existing boundary of our city limits, it being a significant-sized piece of property that is going to generate additional property tax revenue for the city of Fairview, as stated by the fire chief, that there would be a mutual aid if required, that we would service that. It seems to me that, from the city of Fairview's perspective, it would make sense to take the opportunity and act upon the request of the applicant to annex his property into the city.
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor McDonald. To a slight counterpoint, though, bringing this property in, especially where it's located across town from access to the interstate and to Nashville, if the property owner has the right to build with RS40, then they can build, and that would bring in, let's see, one-acre lots on 300 acres of land on the other side of town without improvement to infrastructure or roads at this point. When we're already dealing with those issues, seems maybe a little counter to at least what my position would be on what's best for Fairview right now. We are also in the middle of writing our rezoning, our zoning codes, and I think this is a very significant amount of property to bring in when we are midstream with that particular project.
To respond to that, I would say that, though that is something to consider, if anything was to happen with this property, yes, it would be zoned RS40, but there would still be multiple approvals required to do anything like that, and it being an annexation, that's all speculation. If they were to even want to build a development at RS41, the city's regulations are much more stringent than the county's, so you would end up with a better result if it was. Yes, maybe one acre would be denser than the five acres that they could currently do, but the regulations would be stricter and require a better product on the property. But, all that being said, you would have multiple approvals required from both the Planning Commission and this body if there was to be anything done to that property, even though it would be zoned RS40.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to reiterate and thank you, Vice Mayor McDonald. Those are good points, but still, to my last point that I made, which is something that I feel very strongly about, is that we are in the middle of rewriting our zoning ordinances, and we would be bringing in over 300 acres into zoning that isn't going to exist after we finish these ordinances, because they're just not being written the same. So, to me, I think, I don't know why we would do this right now.
I do want to point out that this property does not have sewer access, so developing it, the first people they have to go to is Dixon Water Authority, and I have spoken with the client and visited this property. He is building his single-family home here. It's a working farm. He's teaching his child how to farm the land, fish on the pond. The single-family home, which is on this property, he has stated that, and I get that it comes in at RS40, but that's just the way it works right now. He is, with this single-family home being built, and the working farm that I have witnessed, I just don't believe that he's going to develop this. It's his single-family home for his family and his child.
Mayor?
Yes.
I promise, this is the last time I'll repeat this, and I understand that, and this is nothing, would be nothing personal against anybody, or the veracity of what they're saying or not saying. We are changing our zoning ordinances, so it's actually a stronger point that it would take a long time to get sewage or anything else run out there if they did want to develop this, or if they wanted to eventually sell this to a developer who would want to, is that we would have an antiquated zone brought in when we are about to change our zoning ordinances. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Respectfully, and just quickly in response to that, understand your point, but if that's the case, then until this zoning, your all zoning is redone and that process runs its course, would you be saying that there's, no annexation can happen, not only for us, but for anybody? And so, you know, I don't think that's necessarily fair to the applicant. So, you know, that would be the logical conclusion of the concern of, hey, nobody can do it. Everything's paused, basically, until this process runs its course, which respectfully, we would, we would hope that that's not the case.
Mayor?
Yes.
If this, if we decide as a board not to approve this just now, is there a time constraint that you need to have this done right now? Because we are trying to get pushed through the ordinances, our new code of ordinance, that might have another option for you guys to annex in under a different property line, something maybe larger than RS40, which I think would make a lot of people happier in our city, and just kind of regulate things a little bit better. I live in Cumberland Estates, which is right next door, and I think he has, I think you guys have a beautiful property. It's definitely a gem, and to see what the entrance that they've built, I mean, is amazing. It is beautiful. But to get back to the point is that Commissioner Roberts brought up, is that we are currently working on new ordinances. One of those ordinances might be for agricultural property that we can annex into our city, is what we're trying to explain, and so to approve it right now, is there a reason why we need it done right now under RS40, or is the applicant...
If, if this decide, if we decide as a board not to approve this just now, is, is there a time constraint that you need to have this done right now? Because we are trying to get pushed through the ordinances, our new, our new code of ordinance that might have another option for you guys to annex in under a different property line, something maybe larger than RS40, which I think would make a lot of people happier in our city and, and just kind of regulate things a little bit better. I live in Cumberland Estates, which is right next door. And I, I think he has, I, I think you guys have a beautiful property. It's, it's definitely a gem. And to see what, what, what the entrance that they've built, I mean, is amazing. It is beautiful. But, but to get back to the point is that Commissioner Roberts brought up, is that we are currently working on new ordinances. One of those ordinances might be for agricultural property that we can annex into our city i- is what we're trying to explain. And so, to, to approve it right now, i- is there a reason why we need it done right now under RS40? Or is the applicant, you know, going to be appreciative to, to wait a little bit on this while we get our ducks in order as far as ordinance, so that we can put it at, under a different ordinance zoning?
Now, that, that's a fair question, and I'll, I'll let our representatives address that in a second. But I, just what I would say generally to that is, at least right now, we know what the zoning is, RS40. There, there's certainty there. Your all's ordinances are very detailed about what you can and can't do in RS40 and all the other zones. And so, I guess just to sort of be held in limbo, and, you know, you all are an efficient body and, and, you know, respect the work you all do, but just to, to basically be just kind of waiting in limbo to that process runs its course, however long it takes, we, we would prefer not to have to do that, for sure.
Mayor?
I don't know of any, you know, we got to have this tomorrow. I think we'd just like the process to be done, and so we can move on and have certainty of what we're dealing with.
Mayor?
Yes?
Thank you for that, and I do appreciate it, and I understand how the applicants would feel, but on the flip side of that are all of the people who voted for us and who expect certainty from us. And they would be held in limbo if we had a property that's over 300 acres annexed in, waiting to see what might happen next, when, as Commissioner Buffalini said, we've got new zoning ordinances coming. We're not against anybody bringing in property and doing what they want with it, as long as it fits the future vision for Fairview. And so, with all due respect for everybody involved, I'm here to represent the voters in Fairview right now. And, and the loud and clear message I received is that this would be the kind of thing that they would not want us to annex in.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes?
Ethan, if you can speak to this. So, once the new zoning regulations are adopted, R40 will no longer be a zoning designation that any property will carry. What zoning would fall, would this property have, and would it be more restrictive than the current R40 designation that we have at the moment?
You're correct that RS40 would no longer be a zone district. There will be a transition to a new nomenclature for the zone district names. The projected zone would fall in line, similarly with RS40, with the density, with one home per acre. However, it would be quite a bit more restrictive from rules and regulations about what could and could not be built, and how the form and the character of each building would be designed on the property.
Mayor?
With that, if I may?
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, yes, Chris, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Just so we're all on the same page, and even for myself to understand it correctly, regardless of whether this is annexed now or in a moment in time after the zoning, new zoning regulations are adopted, the new zoning regulation will apply to this property.
That is correct.
Thank you.
I would, sorry, Commissioner, if I have just one moment. Just to note, and since y'all are new to this as well, UGB is the urban growth boundary. There was an 18-month-ish process with every municipality in the county where they got together, there were county representatives from schools, from the county mayor, county attorneys, Mr. Carter represented the city of Fairview as our attorney there. And there was discussion that took place. Ultimately, there was a vote that set into motion the urban growth boundary of each municipality. That wa- that is a process. It happened in 2001, Mr. Carter, is that correct? 2001 was the original?
It was, it was about 20 years between the first iteration of the UGB, and then the new process started in 2023 and carried over into 2024. The, the cities also entered into an agreement that no cities would annex outside their UGB as set in the new growth plan unless it met certain criteria and the coordinating committee approved it. So, when he speaks of this other track, there would be a, a separate process in order to even get the permission to ask to annex outside the UGB, I think is where Ethan was going with that.
The ultimate goal of the urban, urban growth boundary is to maintain the ruralness of the rural, maintain those rural pieces of Williamson County, maintain the low-density areas of the county, and protect the native lands. And to push the density towards the municipalities where there are fire and police services. Some municipalities have water and sewer services that are served further outside of their boundary, that they're able to have properties annexed and receive those. So, pushing the density into the municipality is the ultimate goal, so that the rest of Williamson County is preserved and maintained with native lands. And so, just wanted to give you kind of some perspective on the urban growth boundary and what that means whenever, we should shorten it to UGB, and that doesn't mean a whole lot to anybody. But that was, felt was necessary, just so you have a little bit of understanding.
Thank you, Mr. Greer. That's very appreciated, and I'm sure that was helpful for anybody else who's listening. To respond to the conversation that was just had about the new zoning ordinances and putative zone that this would fall under, is it correct, Mr. Greer, that that is currently in its first draft and has not been reviewed and sent back for revisions yet?
That is correct.
So it would be premature to invoke any future zoning for this land at this time, right?
Any future zoning of this land?
It can't be guaranteed, can it?
There is, if it was annexed in a month from today, and received RS40, that would transition over to an, a new zone district. But-
But we don't know what, I'm sorry, but we don't know what that future zone district is because it hasn't been voted on by the board yet, so it hasn't yet been approved.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes?
Mr. Greer, i- in our new zoning draft one, or possible, possible future drafts, is there anything zoned for agricultural?
There is nothing zoned for agricultural. It's, the nomenclature that's used is rural, which allows for agricultural use.
Okay. Will there be anything for greater than RS40 for this property, or any property of this size?
Yes.
There will be?
There are, um, currently in the draft, there is availability for, I believe it's one home per five acres is the largest for the density, which is the current zoning of this property. It's RP5, Rural Preservation 5, one house per five acres.
Is there a way, is there any options to making something larger than the five acre for this size of a property?
Commissioner, I, I want to be careful with this conversation because there's been a request made to annex, and this body, and they have a right to do that, and this body needs to respond to it. So what, debating what the new ordinance may or may not contain, because it is just the first draft, and what is possible and not possible in that draft, I think is an inappropriate conversation to have with, with the application that's now pending before the city.
There is a opportunity, if you see that you would like to provide some direction towards the applicant. Our default annexation zone is RS40, unless the applicant requests other than RS40. And so, we do have some agricultural zones today that exist, AR5, which is agricultural, five acres per home, if you want that as a knowledge piece.
Thank you. Mayor, just a quick question to that. And would they, I don't know, this might have to go back down to the Planning Commission if this came forward, if they wanted to change the zoning. I don't know if you can answer this question, but would they qualify for that? Would this property fit under that so that they could change it to the agricultural rezone?
Currently, I believe that they would qualify for that because they're currently with that same zoning designation essentially with the county.
Thank you.
Not to Mayor, if I may, sorry.
Yes?
I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative with any of the commissioners on this. This is just for clarification for my understanding. As it's written, properties that are annexed into the city of Fairview come in and under RS40. We do not have the authority to rezone a property until it's annexed into the property, into our city, do we not? Or do we? So, would we not have to annex the property and then have the applicant request for the zoning? I mean, it's just, I'm just trying to like, understand, put in the cart before the horse type situation.
That's, that's correct. Now, the applicant could submit an application where they want to be something zoned, something other than RS40, and you can run the processes at the same time. But to be clear, the application here that they've made, that we need to act on, is, is to be included in the city, annexed into the city as RS40. And so, it's inappropriate for us to say, well, would you do this or do that? It's, it's not a negotiation. If they want to do anything other than what they've applied for, then it's, it's on them to state that and then go through the process. But what is pending right before us now is an application to annex RS40, and, and we need to act on it.
Yeah, no, absolutely agree. I was just wanting to make sure, I, I guess, since it was on discussed and topic, I just wanted to make, see if that was even something. I don't even know if it would be possible for-
I think you understand the process from your question.
Could an annexation even request a zoning at the same time? You would have to annex first, and then I don't even think-
You could run the processes at the same time?
You can do them similar, or back to back.
But, but that's not what we have, sure, pending.
I think with the, in, in my opinion, it was, what was the vote from the Planning Commission on this, Ethan?
It was unanimous.
Yeah, it was eight to zero, one was absent.
Yeah.
Unanimous vote from the Planning Commission, a positive staff approval, property being in the UGB, and it contiguous to the prop, the city of Fairview city limits, I motion to approve.
Second?
Um, I've got a question still, though. Please. Mr. Carter, will you please tell us, or Mr. Greer, what does a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission actually mean?
I think that would be, in Mr. Greer's-
A positive recommendation from the Planning Commission means that they are in favor of annexing this property into the city of Fairview.
They are in favor of it, or they just said that it meets whatever requirements are in the ordinance?
They are in favor of annexing this property, and they are passing that as their recommendation to the board, that they are recommending to you, that it should be welcomed into the community. That is from the Planning Commission. From a staff level, that recommendation is this meets all of our ordinances, rules, regulations, documents, urban growth boundary, Williamson County Growth Plan, all of the required documents, and they have submitted all of the legal paperwork to bring it to the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Incur with that interpretation.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Nay.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Nay.
Item 11A passes 3-2.
And let's make it clear, that's on first reading, and there'll be a public hearing at the next meeting, and you'll have another shot to vote on it.
Just for clarification, the next meeting, the public hearing will be held on March 6th-
Thank you.
Due to the 15-day required notice.
Meeting after next.
Yes.
Item 11B, Resolution 03-25, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement between GovWell Technologies Incorporated and the city of Fairview, Tennessee.
Mr. Greer?
We had the work session tonight with Liam, a representative of GovWell, to demonstrate the ease of use of the program. I'm happy to answer any other questions. I would like to note that our current contract with IDT is $26,000 per year. This contract is for $22,000 per year. And this allows for several different departments to utilize the program. You pay by module instead of by seat, by person who uses it. And so, we are able to move this, utilize this program in Public Works, Codes Enforcement, Planning, and Public Works, Codes Enforcement, Development Applications, Building Permits. And so, we'll be able to have multiple people utilize it, where we are not able to do that with IDT currently.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes?
And the, the work session was recorded and should be on the city's Facebook page if anybody wanted to see the, it wasn't a super-long conversation, but there was a presentation made by the company, and as well as some conversation from this body in regards to this. One question that, that I had that I did not get to ask, or didn't think about asking during the workshop, is how long will IDT be, remain available in the event that, for whatever reason, that needed to be go, we needed to go back and access that, because there was, for whatever reason. I don't, there could be multiple, but will that be available to us for a length of time before we can say, okay, we're officially up and running and we no longer need IDT, or is it cut off and we don't have access to anything that was through that program?
That's a great question. So, our current contract with IDT allows for us to access for 60 days after the end of contract period. The contract period ends on June 30th. We would be looking to go live with GovWell beginning mid-June, start transitioning folks over, potentially as late as July 1st. But we would, it takes about 90 days for the implementation period, and so that's why it's before you today, so that we have 90 days to get everything moved over, work through the kinks and the bugs, and then get everything corrected prior to it going out. But after that June 30th date, we would have 60 days of access to our IDT information.
And make sure I got my dates right. You said June 30th would be the last day of the contract with IDT?
That's correct.
And the anticipated go-live date?
Is mid-June.
Mid-June. Is there, that would obviously be, the go-live date means that there'd been, everything would already be loaded in, so we would have 60 days from that point, really 75 days from the go-live date before IDT would get cut off to make sure that we didn't miss anything, or-
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I've got two questions for you, Mr. Greer. Have you spoken with any of their current customers, just to find out how GovWell is in practice?
I have. That was, so, we sat through about six different demonstrations with about six different companies when we were going through this process. And we sat through some that were definitely driven towards, that would be better utilized by Williamson County government, not city of Fairview. They're, you know, looking at 250-plus population for, 250,000-plus population utilization rate. And, you know, we've wanted to find something that worked best for the city of Fairview, not necessarily that works best for the city of Franklin with 90,000 people, or this Metro Nashville. Everyone around uses different programs, and so we reached out to those. I looked, I believe Liam mentioned, I used to live in Georgia, lived in Georgia for a brief time after college for work. I lived next to Hampton, Georgia. I reached out to them and spoke directly to their building and planning department. They're set up very similar to Fairview with multiple, everybody wears a couple different hats. And so, spoke with them pretty in-depth about how their relationship has been and what their transition- And so spoke with them pretty in-depth about how their relationship has been, and what their transition was. In particular, they went from paper copies to an online portal, so it was a significant transfer for them. And so they have, everyone spoke very highly. I reached out to several communities that they've worked with, and I haven't heard anything negative about their service, their IT help. That's one of the things that we struggle particularly with IDT, is that I've asked for several different things to get corrected on our page, and every time they come back with, well, that will be a $10,000 development charge. So things that other cities have, even in Williamson County, who utilize IDT, I didn't fill $10,000 for a development charge to change the homepage, was something that I should bring to the board. I thought that was kind of a waste of taxpayer money, so we did not do it. And so looking at an alternate option that was more cost-effective for the city, and functions better for multiple departments. I mean, right now, I know Vice Mayor, you've, and Commissioner Roberts, and Mayor, and Mr. Hall, y'all have all been out to Public Works. Public Works, we get phone calls in our office today, we write it on a sheet of paper, it goes in Todd's box, and it gets handled typically the next day. This will allow citizens to be able to submit Public Works complaints with a picture and say, hey, there's a pothole on Horn Tavern Road, and we can go out, and he'll get a notification on his phone that says, hey, there's a pothole, go out and fix it. You know, it will make our processes so much smoother, and the citizen will get a notification, hey, Todd's fixed the pothole. So it's a lot of small pieces that ultimately add up to better customer service, better citizen service from the city, and an ease of use for the citizen to utilize the program.
Thank you so much for being a good steward of the taxpayer dollars, and for looking out for new technology that can help with the workflow. My second question should be pretty straightforward. Are there any other costs associated with implementation? Or will we go from ending the GovWell, I mean, sorry, the IDT contract, and then just starting this? Or should we expect to see some, any, any additional costs associated with it?
So currently, in the contract, there is a $12,000 implementation cost. Without paying for IDT, we pay in, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tom, this is fiscal year '25. So we would have paid for IDT for fiscal year '26 in '25. You pay a year in advance for the service. So we have the financial ability to pay for the implementation for this year, and then we will pay on July 1st for the following year, for fiscal year '26, is how it's structured with GovWell. And then we will continue to pay every year on July 1st for the remaining years on the contract.
And what's the duration of the contract?
It is five years.
Thank you.
With a locked price for five years of $22,000, and after that, it goes up 5% each year, unless you sign a new, longer contract.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Ms. Jones?
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
I definitely see the, the need for this, but since I wasn't here for the presentation, I'm going to abstain on the vote.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Aye.
Mayor Anderson?
Aye. Item 11B passes four with one abstention. Item 11C, discussion of training facility. I'm going to turn this over to Commissioner Roberts, since she put this on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to be clear, it's the location of the police training facility that I wanted to bring up for discussion. Following our town hall meeting last Thursday, I felt compelled to bring this forward for another conversation with the Board of Commissioners. This is a really important facility, both for our police force and for our city. And we all know that having it adjacent to the primary use parkland and on the out parcel of the park is something that has gotten attention from not only people in the county, but also citizens in Fairview. We need to get this right, and that's worth taking some time and have a full conversation about this. So it's my belief that we need to have a full exploration of the possibilities. This has been the subject of multiple conversations, and the path forward that I see is, if the city does its due diligence in looking at alternate locations and potential options, then we are going to do right by our citizens and by our park. The town hall was the first indication that I've received that this board might be open to looking at viable alternatives. I was very happy to see that, because I don't recall having heard that conversation before. And so I wanted to bring this back up to this board, and respectfully ask that we have a conversation, and perhaps come to an agreement on what we might do to explore any options. Commissioner Buffalini mentioned that there are 21 properties owned by the city. It might very well be that none of those properties are a viable alternative. It also might very well be that those properties could potentially be sold to get money to buy another property. There could be a number of options, and we've heard some creative ideas brought to us by very invested people who have spent a lot of their time researching, and also here speaking with us. And I feel it's our responsibility to listen to that, and to respond by giving this some more time and attention.
I am and definitely agree with you. Let's look into other options.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
I agree with that as well.
Has anybody looked into other options? We'd love to hear them.
I have looked into one, not buttoned in, but...
Well, I'm just, I, I think, to say this conversation hasn't been discussed in length is, I mean, we talked about it for four hours just last week. I know I have put time in and looked at other things. I mean, you, you... I, I, I just don't, I mean, I've talked to other people, I've talked to realtors about different properties that are out there, and what those properties would cost. Any one of those properties is going to create a similar issue with a different group of people. Yes, it could potentially take the park out of the situation. But it's not, I don't think there's a property that exists that's going to be met with no adversity. And when you look at the investment, there's already been some money spent on the property that's being considered currently. That would have to just be, that process would have to start over, and that, that would be, you know, something that, I'm not saying that that's necessarily something we shouldn't consider, or shouldn't do because of that. I'm just saying that the money has been spent on the property to start looking and, you know, doing the steps necessary to get to the point we're at. And I just wonder, in theory, yeah, it's great to talk about a different position, or a different area that this could be built, but I've yet to hear specific solutions presented, other than just the theory that it would be nice to find something different, which I'm not in disagreement with. I just would really love to know if that property exists, and then talk about specifics as to where that property may be.
Now, thank you. I, I would also like to have that conversation. We've looked at the historical record and looked back at the first votes on this and the conversations, and what I haven't seen for 20 years on this is an actual conversation about looking at alternative locations. And it's very recent that this has gotten a lot of public attention. And now that we're here with this particular iteration of the board, I would like to have that conversation. And Vice Mayor McDonald, I appreciate the time that you spent making phone calls, and I was very pleasantly surprised to hear you mention that last week, but there might be other options. And Commissioner Hall has said that he looked into something. I'd, I'd go ahead and like to...
Not specific on a particular piece of property. I have suggested one, but I have talked to the county mayor. He thinks it's a good idea if we could partner with the county. Within Sheriff Hughes also is, would possibly be very receptive. He, he actually said the sheriff would have that right to be partnered with it. And so if there could be a viable piece of property where they could be close to them and us too, I think that we could get something worked out with the county possibly, and they would partner with us. So the, the next thing is, if y'all come up with a viable piece of property, it'd be worth looking into getting some help there from the county funding it.
Thank you.
With us also.
That's really valuable. One of the questions that I had coming into this, I've got a couple of questions. And Mr. Dougherty, I would like to ask you some things, and you may or may not have that information tonight. But I have been asked to, to find out exactly, how many acres do we currently have for Bowie Park? Like, exact number of acres, and do we, do we know that number?
Inside the land trust?
And total acres owned by Bowie Park?
I don't have the exact number, but I believe it's right around 721,000. I mean, yeah, 721 acres, I'm sorry. I know the out parcel is 20, 25, yeah.
And we're sure of those numbers, 721 acres for the land trust?
I believe it's pretty close. Is Keith here?
Keith is here.
I'm, I'm pretty sure. I can, I can verify that.
Keith is, Keith is back there.
And then my, my second question for you, and I see Keith coming up, so he can help verify the numbers. But my second question for you is, have you taken into consideration any possible alternatives? And have you looked into any potential alternatives coming off of the conversation that we had last week?
I have looked at other options prior to the conversations last week. And as Vice Mayor McDonald said, I've not seen anything where we would not have issues with other citizens.
I want to make it clear that I don't think anybody believes everyone would be fine with this. I think that there's just a certain level of discontent. So I agree with Vice Mayor McDonald. Wherever this goes, somebody is going to be unhappy. And I've also made it clear, when I've spoken with people, that we might do our due diligence and look, and we might still vote that this is the right location for it, or, or not vote, because it's, there's nothing to vote on if we didn't change anything. But we might just say that it is the, the location for it. But, so I, I want to make that really known, that I don't think we're going to find a place that everybody is happy with. But I think people would be happy to know that we're trying, as a collective group, trying. We are not allowed to speak about the conversations that we have individually through the week with one another. The only time that the Board of Commissioners can discuss with each other what we are finding out is in a meeting like this, or through a common person, like our city manager. And so I, I want it to be known that we are trying.
Yes, and I am always open to any, any piece of property to look at. We are going to need, it, it, we are going to need some things. We need more than, we probably at least a 10-acre tractor, or more. And we, we are looking for a certain lay. We, we would like to be in some sort of, of a, lack of a better word, low-lying area with high areas around, hard-to-develop property. But we, we are, we will continue to look, and I would encourage anybody that thinks there is a possibility to shoot it to it, shoot, shoot it to me, we'll get it, we'll go out and vet. I can put together a report. We looked at this property. This is what we like, don't like. This is the problems we see. These are the pros, these are the cons. I guess one of the big issues I have right now is we are, I, I have been under the impression that I'm supposed to build a range, and I've been going forward. We've gotten pretty much all the engineering done, all the soil testing, all the environmentals for the park. I have trouble writing checks for invoices, if I feel like y'all are fixing to tell me to stop work at a meeting. So I guess, as we're, as we're going forward this conversation, my mind goes immediately to, you know, I guess, do we just, I, I need to know what y'all want, as far as that, that property goes. Because I've been, I've, if it was a, it was a project that was already in place when I, when I became city manager, and I'm just trying to get done the projects that, that the boards want done. So I, I totally get it. I mean, I, I, but at the same time, also have a project to finish. So I, I need to have direction on, do I stop? Do I, do I keep, keep going? Do we, you know, I guess, I guess, as a city manager, yes. If something falls out of the sky, I would not hesitate. If there's a perfect piece of property, I will sure let you know if I, if I find it. And if anybody else finds it, please let me know.
Thank you. And Mr. Dougherty, we don't have to wait for land to fall out of the sky. We, we could do some assessments, and, and you and I do have a conversation scheduled, and I, I'd like to just look at those things. This, this particular project has been discussed for so long, that I am also having a little bit of a challenge trying to understand why it's something we've got to do right now, all of a sudden, when I'm asking to just take a pause, and, and just take a look. And there's nothing to say that you need to stop what you have done. But there's not anything that I have heard in any of our recent conversations that says that there's something imminent happening right now. And I feel very rushed in going forward with conversations about this, when I think we've got really valid questions that are being raised, and I don't intend to ignore the people who are asking us those questions. And so I would like to make sure that we do get it right, ask the questions, and seek the answers, and actively seek those as our responsibility to the people who are here. I, I've listened to a lot of conversations lately, and I am persuaded that it would be a good idea for us to look. Now, I can't outvote four other members of the board, but we have been asked to look. Very loudly and clearly, we've been asked. I don't want to slow down training our officers. But again, this has been something we haven't had, and now all of the sudden, it's urgent. So with all due respect for everybody that's been involved in this, I, I don't want to waste taxpayer dollars, I don't want to waste anyone's time. But this is also something that I'm being asked to do, and, and I agree, it's the right thing to do.
Mayor Forme?
Yes.
Tom, is there any expiration date on any of the tasks that have been completed on that property thus far? How long are those good for, before they would have to be done again?
I believe we're good for, I believe we are good for some time.
Okay. So I think, I think Commissioner Roberts brings up a fair point. I think it is fair to say that we don't, we don't have the opportunity to meet over a coffee and talk about everything that we've each individually done to look into this situation, and put our heads together and come up with a solution. However, do you think Commissioner Hall has brought up a very good point? If he has in fact talked to the mayor of the county, and the mayor of the county seems like they are interested, I don't know whose shoulders that would fall on, whether that's Mayor Anderson reaching out to them, or someone within staff to reach out to, to the mayor of the county and discuss something real, other than just, I'd be open to it. I think it would be worth having a conversation of what are you, if, if you're looking for a partnership, or if there's a need for them, or if they've got land that they could consider working, partnering with us on. It's worth having that, absolutely worth having that conversation, and considering something like that. But at some point, and I guess that's, and I, and, and this isn't to say that it's urgent. I mean, I, it, it, it may take years before this is built. That's, you know, I personally am not pushing this forward. I, I don't have a set timeline in my head, on, just from, from my perspective. However, at some point, we've got, like, I, I don't, I don't know how to say this, but how, when is it, when has enough effort been put into finding another location where we can all look at each other in the, and, and say, we tried? And, and, and I'm not against trying to find that solution, but I just, I'm curious where that line is to where we feel like we gave it an effort. And I'm all for it. I'm wide open. I think there's been plenty of people that have come up here and spoken on this topic, on how they feel. I think very few real solutions have been presented. I mean, there's concerns, plenty of those, and that's understandable. But at the end of the day, solutions are what make this problem go away. And I haven't personally heard any that are viable solutions. There's been conversations about properties that are available. But the one property that was mentioned to me by part of the group that has been up here and spoke their pieces was an astronomical amount of money in a location that I don't, I mean, it's, it's, the location isn't even relevant, it's just the price of the property is, I don't know if that would be responsible on the city's behalf, to spend the money that that property would take to get. Wide open to solutions, but if anybody out there, including those watching at home, those here in the audience, if you have solutions that you feel work, please email any one of us, and we will have those discussions. Like I said, I am not, I think we can wait. If we're at a point where, hey, the, everything right now, like until I say, go ahead and do the next step, like, let's, let's, let's wait, let's see, let's give it some time. But I think we should put some parameters on when we will all be satisfied. If we find a solution, great. If we don't, but we tried, we can all feel like we gave it an effort. To leave it open-ended, to just, to me, I'm just, I'm just, does that come, I'm not trying to be, I just don't know what to say to that, but there's got to be a point where we've said we've tried, right? And there just isn't out there. And that's not to say I really hope we don't find another solution. I hope we do. I hope, I mean, if there was a solution to make everybody happy, I'm all for it. It's just in the effort that I've put in, and I can only speak for myself and judge that for what, whoever, however you want, not you particularly, the proverbial you, I've tried, and I don't, I just don't know. And when you look at the property that's there with the money that we spent on it, and multiple boards in the past have all also worked on this problem, and also all have not come up with a different solution. I just, you know, but that's it, yeah.
Mayor?
But I'm wide open to them, if we can have those presented.
I'm gonna clarify exactly the word that Roger said to me, I have to mention it to him about possibly partnering. He thinks it's a good idea, but he thought that it was the sheriff's decision to make. So I talked to the sheriff, and he's willing to sit down and listen to any possibilities that we can come up with, that they could help with too. So, as in the past, you know, if there was something that we would partner with, like in the park, the ball field, they paid fifty percent of the lights, and we paid fifty percent. So it's kind of a partnership that way. And they have actually in the past, in the event that something did come about, I know at one time Mayor Anderson said that he would sponsor it and pay for it, and then we would make payments for our half. Wasn't that, we had to make our payment right then. So that's an option that we might have in the future. Now, agreed that we do need a training facility. I don't want to knock them out of any training facility at all. But one other question I'm gonna ask tonight, and it's something that's popped in my mind here. Tom, have you heard anything about the one that we used to have when we leased for a dollar a year at the water plant? What they've done with that property, whether we could possibly partner with them and get them interested in improving that particular firing range out there?
Yes, Commissioner Hall, we have looked into that, and that property is being used by Water, Safer Dixon. And they, they, there's no property out there available for us to train on.
Okay. It's a good isolated area, so it'd be an excellent area if we could come up with something.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Carter, is there any possible way that we can have a special session with possibly the mayor of Williamson County, the sheriff, just to discuss this openly with us all, rather than not? So that we can have some sort of, everyone be part of it? Because outside of our agenda here tonight and every board meeting, we're not able to speak to each other on any of the topics. And it might hinder our ability to make proper judgment on this or any facility going forward.
Mayor can call a special meeting and invite the mayor of Williamson County. Or to our meeting. They could do the same thing, I suppose.
Okay.
But I, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I think the, from my experience, the first thing that should be done is Chief Humphries should sit down with his counterpart with Williamson County and see if that's even an option. The county has the same difficulty that Fairview has. In my practice, twenty-five years of practice, the hardest things to locate are shooting ranges, airports, and landfills. And I've represented clients that have wanted all three at different times. And as a lawyer, it will absolutely wear you out, because no one is ever happy about any of them. I've never, I've never had a landfill owner that I've represented, or someone that wants a shooting range, or wants an airport where there hasn't been lots of disagreement, and lots of vocal disagreement. I think the biggest crowd I've ever seen in the Murray County courthouse was when I was representing, trying to site a landfill. And we had three hundred people show up in red t-shirts. So, I, I said after that I would never represent another landfill. And I feel the same way about shooting ranges and airports. I have experience with airports too. I feel the same way about them. I have no interest in my private practice representing them, because it just becomes such a nightmare, because you're trying to make so many different stakeholders.
I get it, and we appreciate that.
Yeah, I think that's an option, but I think, I think the proper place to start would be whether there's even any real interest.
Right.
The mayor's, you know, the county mayor speaking to Mr. Hall, saying that there's general interest is one thing, but to see if there's any real interest, I think, you know, before there's any effort to convene some sort of joint meeting, I think that's the place to start.
Right. I don't think the question necessarily is having the facility. I think we, it is something that is necessary for our police department, and also for our fire department to utilize it as well for training purposes, including the classroom and everything else. I think the biggest conversation piece of this is its location. I think that's ideally the conversation that we want to have. If there's other viable locations that we can have, even outside of Fairview. Because if Williamson County and the Sheriff's Department want to partake in this, it could possibly save our tax dollars as well, if we could split the cost. How much, have we already invested in the engineering of this facility?
In everything together, not this fiscal year, but last fiscal year as well, I believe we're at one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars invested in this, in this facility. But I do want to say that, that we, on one hand, I have a police chief that's been asking for eight years for a facility. And, you know, and I'm under the pressure that I just need to get it built. Now, if you guys tell me, let's stop for three months, six months, whatever, and just look under every stone we can. I just think, I think our employees, our officers deserve a place to train. I believe this is safe. I believe it's been well engineered. I know there is controversy, and I'm willing to look. But I also know that it's, it's in a hole. The topography is, if not perfect, it's pretty ideal. But at the same time, there might be that, that perfect property out there, and I'm willing to keep looking.
So, Mr. Doherty, and I don't want to beat this down, but, because I was looking forward to a shorter meeting tonight. So with the one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars that we've already spent on the engineering of that, is that already coming off the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget that we have? Or is there additional seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that?
The whole, the whole budget for the, for the range has been moving. I had, I've had five hundred thousand dollars in the line item for the last four years. For, and, you know, we just recently got a little bit of traction in moving forward. And, you know, I thought we might get a little more traction, is the reason I asked for an extra two hundred and fifty. Now, I, they have told us, as I stated in a meeting a while back, they anticipate the entire cost being between seven hundred and fifty and one point two million. I'm hoping it's closer to the seven fifty.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I, I've gotten a few things to say. And we have reviewed this dollar amount in the past couple of meetings. The only amount approved is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And based on our last conversation, the hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars that you just mentioned would come out of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, based on my understanding of how we approved the funds. If there's a different accounting for that, then can we please get some sort of spreadsheet or something that would show what the costs are for this? Knowing that we cannot start spending any more money on this without knowing that the total cost is not going to exceed the approved seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Setting aside whether or not we're looking at a different location, this is a threshold question, and it feels like we keep dancing around, but not quite landing on the same spot every conversation. And so if I am operating under some sort of misunderstanding, then please correct me tonight and immediately. But then follow it up with something in writing that shows what we have agreed to as a cap on this that we would spend. And I don't want to start down the road and then find out it's become a one point one million project. It gets a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. And if we can't come in under that, then it all is going to come back to the beginning anyway. And this is the conversation we've kept having. But now you've just said between seven fifty and one point two again.
I apologize if there's been some misunderstanding. I believe it's in the minutes, exactly what I said, that meeting. But what is in the budget right now is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're in the budget next year. If y'all decide there needs to be zero, there'll be zero. If there needs to be, I come to and say, hey, we've got three hundred thousand, finish this project up, put three hundred thousand in, but that is, that is, y'all approve the budget. And there's really, you try to stay, but the things happen, projects, different things happen with projects that change the cost daily. But I believe we're in the ballpark with what I've told you.
Okay, then here's, here's my proposal, since I also brought this up. And a nod to what Vice Mayor McDonald was saying before, because you're right, we do need to have some sort of endpoint. This can't go on indefinitely. We need to settle and, and get a decent facility for our officers. So here's a proposal that I'd like to at least start with, is that we come up with a plan for how we will look into some different options. Perhaps we do have a work session, if the mayor would be so inclined to offer another work session for us to have out in the open to discuss ideas. We could open up a call for proposals where people can submit ideas, and we could discuss or do some work, and then have the meeting about the options that we looked into. We could set a timeline for this and have a final decision date that is set. And then we can move forward, knowing that we also have bond money that does have an expiration date. But that's still about almost two years away. So, I don't want to waste taxpayer dollars. If any portion of what's been spent already, if there were a different location, if that could be transitioned to that other plan, that would be great. But, but I think that we do need to have a plan, and that's something that would help us all have a better of understanding of a direction. But we, we really need a good plan.
So, I'm a little confused. So we want to stick at seven fifty, but if we find a property, we want to spend over a million on the property, including the seven fifty? Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Is that question for me, Mayor?
I guess so.
I haven't put out any numbers of what I think that we would spend, but I have asked that we do our checking to see if we have any options. That is the only option I have put out, that we take time and with open minds actually look at alternatives and openly discuss them and share them, so that everyone knows that we have gone through that process. And that we haven't just settled on something that was decided a long time ago. The city has changed since this was first decided a long time ago, and the people who are voting today have changed. This is a twenty-year-old plan. I don't think it's unreasonable to reexamine it and go forward with what's best for Fairview and the direction that we are going.
Mayor?
Can I just?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, so when this was approved twenty years ago, finances weren't then what they are now. So, at this point, we are in good physical condition to be able to, if we find a different location, I guess the seven fifty is out, out the window, because, you know, property value in Fairview is, you know, I was, as everyone else says they were doing, I was, there's nothing that the city has that will work. And I can guarantee you that, except for the hole that they have right now in the out parcel. If there is other property, we're gonna have to come up with a pretty good amount of money to buy that property. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand will not be an issue. I mean, it's gonna be seven fifty, and then it's gonna be a million plus to buy a piece of property when we already have a piece of property that is paid for. No matter where it goes, we're gonna have four-hour discussions with just a different group of people. So I just don't, I don't, I mean, I feel like we're kind of beating a dead horse. I get it that, you know, we're trying to all find a good solution. But that terrain out there is perfect for this training facility. Franklin, theirs is right in the middle of the city. Dixon is right in the middle of, you know, a ball field and park. I just don't know that there's gonna be a solution that everyone is gonna be happy with. If we move it, that's gonna be a whole nother group of people, another four hours, five hour, you know, weeks, months, whatever, hearing another group of people who are not happy with it. We already own this property. It is, the terrain is good for this facility. I just, I don't, I don't see anything unless somebody just comes with something, and then we have to decide to spend quite a bit of more, more taxpayer money to make it work. So that's, that's kind of, I'm, I'm in favor of this property. And I believe that it's the best place for the training facility. Our officers need to be trained. And I appreciate what Commissioner Hall said, but I'm with Williamson County weakly. And if, if Sheriff Hughes has some type of solution, you know, that would be great. But counties told me, we have this many officers, and they have this many officers. And it would not be fairly used if we were to even, they've told me that they're not interested in partnering, because we don't have, we have just a small amount of officers compared to what county has in the sheriff's office. So I just don't know how that would work. But, you know, I respect that. But you know, I respect that um, Commissioner Hall has long relationships with these people and also, you know, a lot of them are family. So I know you can speak with them, you know, often. And if they've given you a different solution than the no that they gave me, I would love to hear it. But they just said that it's just not even. Like they have many more than we have and I don't know how the, you know, the equity would work for us. You know, I've just heard a no from them. That's all I have to say.
Mayor?
Yes?
With all due respect, we are not beating a dead horse. And I'm actually taken back by the fact that you just said that. Because it's not beating a dead horse, it's talking about what our citizens want and what our police department needs. But we also have to take into consideration what our citizens want because it's the tax dollars that are going to be taking that, uh, paying for that. And if we have to purchase another facility or another property to make a lot of people happy and not just, I'm not talking about just the people that have been sitting here. There's a lot of people that are, that are not happy about it, that haven't showed up here and that refuse to show up here because they don't want to be talked down to by certain people on this board. Now, I think it's worth the time and the opportunity right now that we have before investing any more money into this facility, which I am for this facility. I think that it, it's worth the time to give it, even if it's another month or, or a month and a half to decide that this is the proper location. Now, if we buy another piece of property, this is now an investment of our city. That's all I have to say.
Mayor?
I heard two at the same time, so y'all choose.
I yield to the Vice Mayor.
I just have a, a question for us all. If, it sounds like, well, if we're going to be serious about looking for another solution, one, I respect everybody's current position on this matter. However, when's, how long has it been since the first time we had this conversation with even this body? Been a while. And with all due respect, we still haven't heard a, a legitimate, hey, here's an idea. That being said, what do we feel the minimum lot size would, that would be needed to build this facility in an appropriate and safe manner? 29 acres is the current, it's property that we are considering. I think it's necessary, I mean, if the layout, if the engineering of the current design takes up a footprint of 12 acres, I think it would be un wise to put it on 13 acres. I think a buffer of some degree would probably be necessary considering the nature of the, of the use of it. So 25, 30 acres is probably minimum. So instead of the disagreement, we can all say that we're looking for solutions. A 30-acre lot or larger is what will work. Speak to who you know. Call around, talk to the county, talk, I think there's, I think there's validity in the fact that it is not a, the county is a whole box of worms. There's commissions in the county that are going to have to approve this. It's not just an individual that can say, I'd be open to that. There's, there's bureaucracy with that as well. I'm, I'm all for looking for a solution, but I feel like we're just chasing our tail on this topic. So let's set out. Let's put a workshop together for the first meeting in March to talk about solutions that we have all found. And I would love if we could go a meeting without having any discussion on this topic. Because it just seems to, like I said, chase our tail. I do appreciate the concern. I have a concern as well, I've had concern with this. The, the, the issue that I take with all these conversations is there's a lot of maybe unintentional, but suggestions, unintentional suggestions being made that effort has not been put into trying to find a solution. So what ultimately looks like the ones that are ready to just say, you know what, we tried. We look like we're just railroading this thing and that couldn't be further from the truth. So I would like to say, let's take 30 days. Let's have a workshop and first the next month. Talk about the solutions that we have all found. And if nobody has found any, we will all agree that the place that we are currently talking about is the best location. I think that's fair. I think 30 days with the community's help, every one of us is reachable from, anyone in this city can reach any one of us. If they have a solution, they have something that they think that can work, please share it. But think about it from a logical standpoint. Is it reasonable? 100 acres for three-plus million dollars is not a reasonable solution in my mind. I don't believe it is, maybe I'm, I'm one vote, maybe others would feel it would be and we can spend that money. I um, that's, that's all I have to say.
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, thank you, Vice Mayor. I think that's a, a great idea to pick a plan and go forward. I think that before we can start making calls and looking for something, we would need either from the city manager or from um, our police chief, a, a description of what would work. So the, the size, the type of land, what would it need to look like? I also think that this would be a project that the city manager should work on with us as well. And I am also asking that we have documented reports with who we spoke with. It, it's too vague to know that somebody talked to somebody on not a specific date. I, I would like us to firm up how we're having those conversations and who they were with and perhaps contact information in case another board member wanted to follow up with somebody who is, um, is potentially reachable. But um, we could just take this month and spin our wheels without having a more concrete plan about how this would actually be put into effect. So I think that with those added details, I think that would be very helpful. But, but something in writing that we are able to look at would be very helpful.
Mayor?
Yes?
Uh, I agree with Vice Mayor on the 30 days. Put it back on the agenda within 30 days. And in the meantime, I will talk to the county sheriff and see um, specifically if he's interested in coming, sitting down and talking to us at the same time. Or if he's, he's got a need also, from what I understand. So um, they're doing a lot of new construction on their jail, so. So I will find out for sure how, how interested he is and, and I have that information when we do. Have it, uh, next meeting for, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to clean up the record a little bit. Commissioner Buffalini had asked for a list of parcels that the city owns greater than half an acre. I provided the list to him. There were 20 parcels listed on that list. Eight of the parcels are part of Bowie Nature Park and are covered under the Land Conservation easement. One parcel that is owned by the city was donated by Ms. Bowie. We refer to it and has been referred to as the out parcel. Two parcels are for Historical Village and Veterans Park. Three parcels are currently used for City Hall, the Fire Department, Public Word, Public Works and the Codes Building. One parcel is dedicated for park space by the Bell Haven Development and has restrictions exclusively for a park or athletic fields. One parcel was acquired for the Northwest Highway alignment at the intersection of Highway 96. Three parcels are for future expansion of Fairview Fire. One of those parcels was dedicated by the Bell Haven Development. It is point eight, point eight seven of an acre, significantly out of this conversation. And then one parcel is abandoned former water and sewer department property, which is also less than one acre. Those are the 20 parcels that are currently utilized and owned. And that is everything that we own over half of an acre. Excluded from that was all of the right-of-way that city roads and all those items that we own that also are excluded from this conversation.
So in your opinion, any of the parcels that are owned by the city, are any of them, except for the out parcel, adequate for a training facility?
In my opinion, no parcel owned by the city is adequate for training. The out parcel is the only parcel that is large enough to accommodate this facility.
And so that leaves me to believe if we do come up with something that we will have to come up with a substantial amount of money to purchase a property for this. And that's something we will just have to consider as a board if we want to spend a million-plus dollars of taxpayer money to buy an alternate site for the facility. And then it would have to be a situation where we would be respectful of the surrounding people who live in that location as well. And as we did, it was publicized. You know, I, I don't feel like, I'm very respectful. I, I don't feel like I've ever spoken down to anyone. And if they feel that way, I'd like for them to come talk to me. I have a business next door and about every third person who comes in my business speaks to me about things going on in the city. So I feel the pulse of the city. It's not just a, a group in a certain subdivision that supports somebody. It is a wide range across our community. And when they come in my business, I spend more time speaking to people from this community and hearing them out and trying to come up with solutions for them in their different situations than I do working my business. And they know that I'm fine with that. I will meet anyone, anywhere. But I think it's, it's comfortable for them because they know if they are a little timid about being on TV or speaking in front of a group, they know that they can come there and speak to me and I will listen. And about, I'm not joking, about every third person says, this isn't about what I do at the business. It's about, you know, something going on in the community. So I do not feel that statement's adequate that I talk down to anyone. And if they feel that way, they can come talk to me and we can work that out. But uh, our town hall was listed to be from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. I left here at 11:45 last Thursday night. And I have no problem with that. But we listen and we listened for that whole entire time. And 90, probably 95% of it was about uh, the shooting range. So you know, I just want to come up with a good solution for our officers. So they're trained because God forbid, you know, I know that people say, oh, I can't believe this happened here when something bad happens. And I hear that every time. And it's like, we need to be proactive instead of after the fact, after someone dies, after something, a school shooting or something happens, instead of being, you know, reactive after it happens, oh, we hate that that happened. We need to have our officers trained so that hopefully we can handle things before it happens.
Mayor?
Yes?
Um, Mr. Paisley, I'm sorry, we've, we've ping-ponged you, but I just realized you did not get the opportunity to speak when you walked up here before. So I think we're asking about the current acres, but do you also have the original acreage that was dated?
I do not offhand. Currently, according to the conservation easement, there's, was 721.92. But technically 680 of, of those acres, point 708 are actually under the conservation easement. The other stuff has future municipal buildings and um, uh, also other park uses, if that makes sense.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Paisley, I'm sorry, Mayor?
Yes?
City Hall sits on what used to be part of that land trust, correct?
Not the land trust, part of the park, yes.
Part of the park? What about Publix?
That also.
Part of the park?
Used to be, yes.
Okay.
And Publix is actually who got us the conservation easement.
Right.
Mayor, last thing I'm going to say, I promise. I would like to add, I do appreciate everybody's passion on this topic. And I just ask that we all set out with the same level of passion towards finding a solution. Hopefully come the first of next month, or the first, yes, the first of next month. Not necessarily the first, but the first meeting. We can have a workshop. Hopefully there is a solution presented that is feasible and plausible. And we can consider it in a, in a meeting and discuss it and take action upon that. However, uh, well, that's, that's just it. I just hope we take the same level of passion and, and go out and, and actively put it to work. But I do appreciate the conversation that we've had.
Anyone else before I move on? I'm number 12, Round Table, Mayor and Commissioners. Commissioner Hall?
Just want to thank all the city employees and the, um, all the work, hard work they do. And they're the backbone of our community and I do thank y'all. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Commissioner Buffalini?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm going to be brief tonight. I, I want to thank everybody for showing up today and showing support. And even in our town hall meeting that we had the other day, it, it was a long meeting. But I think it was effective and we got to listen to, whether you live in the city or live in the county, we got to listen to you, we heard you, I promise you that. Something else that I, I, I believe Mayor Anderson might touch on in a little bit uh, is the issues with, that we've been having with Bowie Park. I don't want to get too involved of it, but just to let the citizens know that we are working on, on things. And I'm going to leave that up to Mayor Anderson to discuss that. Just to reiterate, I, I also want to invite everyone down to our next meeting. We're going to, the state is going to be representing uh, a, award to our Fairview Middle School wrestling team who won states. Uh, and also I want to give a big shout out to the girls and boys' basketball team for the middle school as well, for their, their feat that they've been achieving as of late with area, district and regional um, games that they've been playing. So congratulations to them as well. And uh, that's all, that's all I have for this evening, Mayor.
Commissioner Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I want to second what Commissioner Buffalini just said about the basketball games last Saturday night was one, one great game by our boys here against Stewart County. And, and everybody showing up was really fun. It's great when the community comes together for something exciting like that. Just don't forget, there's a blood drive here tomorrow. You can check it out on the website. And as Mr. Ross said earlier, you can sign up for a time or simply show up. And thank you for all the staff who have stayed here tonight and for the board for entertaining all of my many questions and initiatives. I appreciate you all.
Vice Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I don't have a whole lot. I, I do, Mr. Doherty, got a question for you or maybe a request. It's been a little bit, I know we were up against the time on the fire station and all that Northwest Highway with the money that needs to be allocated, that is allocated to be spent there. Can we get an update on all that at the next meeting, just where we're at with that? timeline we're looking at? What we can expect to see? I know there were some questions about it, though few at the town hall about Northwest Highway. I know there's, it's a big project, and things are moving, and there's other variables that we have to wait on. But I know that, that money that we have has an expiration date, or we'll have to figure out a way to extend it. So I would just like to make sure that we're not taking, and I know you're not, but just for the BOC as a whole, for the citizens that are out there watching, I would just like to make sure that we're all keeping our eye on that ball and all have an understanding of where we're at with that and the timeline for it. And I don't think, that shouldn't be too difficult for you to throw together. But just a quick update on, on that would be, would be fantastic. That's all I have.
Thank you for everyone who came out tonight and all who are watching at home. Thank you to Officer Jade and Officer Ray for keeping us safe tonight and hanging out with us. I appreciate y'all. Appreciate the staff. Y'all work so hard for us all the time. Patrick, always appreciate you. Appreciate the board. And Ethan, is this Where the public can?
That is the map of Bowie Nature Park and the trails, I believe.
Is that on the new, or Richard, is that on the new Bowie Park?
That is, that is on the new website, and I put that out on social media today as well.
Okay, good. So I, I made a copy at my shop today in color of the boundaries of Bowie Park. And it shows on this, the perimeter trail, it says in red, it looks kind of brown to me, but whichever color it is. There are, if, if anyone would like to see where the perimeter trail is in relation to the boundaries of Bowie Nature Park, I encourage you to go to our new Bowie Park website to check this out. There are several places where the perimeter trail is right on the boundary. So with everything that, I'm just gonna speak for myself. Ethan and I have discussed this week, and I appreciate you sending the ten items that come into play in protecting the park. I put out on social media those ten items. Got a lot of great response from doing that because it just showed all the safeguards. Including if there's any development around the park, I just want the community to know that there is a huge buffer in between the park and the development. Which would be on the developer's property. So if you look at the perimeter, if you go to the website and you look at the perimeter trail, and you look at, there's certain places where the perimeter trail butts right up to the boundary of the park. If there's someone who lives on property that is, is on that perimeter, and they decide to sell their property to a developer, we ultimately have decisions to make, but we can't control that. If that person decides to sell, then we can't tell them they can't sell. So I heard, you know, the issues and the concerns this week that people have had, and there have been inspectors at the park to make sure that the development is not encroaching on the park. Please understand that, that, you know, there's subdivisions that have always drained onto the park. That keeps the streams flowing. That keeps the five lakes full. We, it's not like we want to put some barrier around the park or a dam around the park to prevent stormwater from going into the park. Because if we do that, that is just making a bigger problem than what is being considered as a problem, which is actually not right now. So some drainage onto the park, positive. Keeping the park safe with the ten different items that I posted on social media, you can find that out there, you know, it's on one of the popular sites. Just lets you know what we do to protect the park. And if you'll go to the Bowie Park website, check out this, this, you know, this, this site plan. And just look where the perimeter trail is in relation to the boundaries of the park. It might help you understand that it's, you know, some of the perimeter trail is right on, you know, next to that boundary. So if anyone wants to reach out and get questions answered, I'm sure any of our staff, myself, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but I feel like they're, you know, open to anybody coming and speaking to them about that. We did have something brought up about speed bumps at our town hall.
Mayor, can I interrupt you for one moment? Just about the park. Our Planning and Codes Department is located at seven-one-one-one Bowie Lake Road, right next to the Fire Department. If you stop in while you're leaving the park and report something to me, we will immediately go and look at it.
Thank you.
If it gets posted on Facebook and I see it while I'm eating dinner,
Right.
I am not able to immediately go and look at it. So just stop in our office. Let us know if you see something. We try our best to stay on top of everything. There are several people who walk the perimeter trail daily. There are several people I'm in contact with that walk out through the park that I ask frequently of updates that they see, or if they let me know if they see something out of the ordinary. And so stop at our office, swing by. We're, as you're, you have to drive right by us as you're leaving the park. Just stop in and let us know. It helps us get response out into the construction project much faster than a Facebook post that gets funneled in later.
And Ethan, I appreciate you saying that because he's right. If, you know, there, he's right there. The Codes Department's right there. And when, when, when things are put on social media, you know, or somebody puts something on social media, and they don't have the facts, man, it gets everybody confused and upset. So why not just go get the facts? You know, reach out to Ethan. He knows. He knows better than somebody making a comment on social media when they may not have the facts. And all that does is get people upset and, you know, and, you know, just excited about, or in fear. Sometimes for no reason, when, you know, Ethan knows. And he can help you.
And I love Bowie Nature Park.
Yes.
I still have the shirt from when I was six years old, when they built the original wooden treehouse playground. And we had bricks out there with our names on them. I love Bowie Nature Park.
Yes.
I care. I want it to be protected and maintained. Please let me know if you see something.
I think that's a common feeling from the board, the staff, and pretty much, I would say, all of our community, that we want to protect the park. I think that's something we want to all work to make sure happens together. So I'll move on to the speed bumps. I think somebody had mentioned about, you know, speeding through subdivisions and why can't we put speed bumps in? There is a document that was given to us by the fire chief. And I'm more than happy to, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, obviously, but I'm more than happy to give the reasons why speed bumps are not a good idea. I think there's other ways to calm traffic other than that type situation. One is our police vehicles, our fire vehicles can be damaged greatly going over these speed bumps. And also, if someone's car is damaged going over one of these, they're gonna come to the, they're gonna reach out to the city to handle that. And I think there, you know, there's many other ways to calm the traffic other than, you know, something like this. So if anybody wants this document, like was said earlier, the Around Town Coffee is this coming Wednesday at eight-thirty. Join us, and I'll give you a copy of this, because I've got a stack of them. It's gonna be at Going Postal. Oh, also, yesterday, we had a meeting of the women in business. I can't tell you if you're a lady out here or even, you know, surrounding communities who have a business and want to get together with other ladies who own businesses in this community and surrounding, that women's, women in business group that we have out here, I can't tell you how these ladies touch me. Patty Carroll, our Economic Development Officer, was there yesterday as well. And we got to hear for, some great stories from some great ladies. And some of them I've known for a long time, some are new faces, but the testimonies and stories and things and people they are reaching right now and things that they are doing, it, it's just, I encourage you. It's on, you know, you can, you can get involved on, sign up on Facebook. And I think they meet quarterly. I've been to several of the meetings since I got involved, and I haven't regretted it. It's a good time to collaborate, get new ideas, and just find out what our special ladies in this community are involved in and the businesses that they run. So I just want to encourage you to, you know, get involved with that group if you can and just, you know, come meet with us, because it's a, it's a really benefit to our community. the Goldstein Insurance Company, Sandra, she's, she put it together. And so you can reach out to her as well if you want to find out more information. If you're not on Facebook, she's local out here. Looking forward to the Storybook Trail. That's, that's such a great idea. I, I love that. Reading and the park. What's better, right? I guess that's all I have tonight. Thank you for hanging with us. And like I always say, let's keep Fairview beautiful, and let's please pick up trash and not throw it out. Entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you.